I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the February 5th, 2024 study session of your Ashland City Council. The way that we typically do study sessions for everyone who is here this evening is that this is a time for the council to dig deeper into particular issues. We don't make decisions here, but we can often provide direction to staff on particular issues that they would then bring back to us during a regular business meeting where we are able to make formal decisions. If you would like to speak to us this evening on an issue that is either on the agenda or isn't, you'll make sure that you get a blue paper back there along the wall and make sure that when you sign up, you indicate what the topic is that you are looking to speak to us on so that we can make sure we bring you up at the right time. And with that, I will go ahead and we will move into public input. It appears that all of the signups that we have at this point are for one of the topics. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak on something that is not listed on the agenda? I'm just not seeing it correctly. Okay. So we will move on now to the Croman Mill Townmakers LLC update, followed by the cleanup update, and then the last item on our agenda this evening is the severe weather emergency shelter temperature thresholds.
As you know, this is an update for the Townmakers LLC Croman Mill Development Proposal. With me tonight is Mike Mahaffey.
Brandon, there's no microphone in that space.
I thought you could hear me. So essentially, I'm just here to introduce Mike Mahaffey and Mike Weinstock, who will be presenting the update, and I'll be back up if you have any questions of staff or when we get to the Croman Mill cleanup agenda item. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So I wanted to start off, and thank you for allowing this time, Council. I'm really excited because, and Brandon will share with you later, but there's some positive things happening in the cleanup, and as a result, we are starting to move forward with a much more rapid pace than we had in the past. We've hired several consultants, and Michael Mahaffey will go into that with you, but to do the TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, we need a topographical survey, a couple of other things. But with that, I will turn it over to Michael Mahaffey. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to give you an update. You know, as we're moving forward, we'd like to keep you apprised of where we are in the process, and this is a big project, as you know, and a lot of opportunities for things to happen here, and we see this very much as a collaboration with the city and the wider district. A lot of opportunities for new businesses and affordable housing and a number of things. As Mike was mentioning, we have good news on the cleanup. I think Brandon's going to give you a little bit more update on that. Oregon DEQ is monitoring that with the engineers working on that. The current owners have offered to do rough grading as they're working out of the site that will follow our final grading, so we're going to get more topography, a more recent topography. We've ordered a LiDAR drone flight to be flown over the site. We just had a good meeting today, and we had a previously, a major pre-application conference after we presented to you in November, which was very positive. A lot of pieces, a lot of moving parts, but things seem to be in good shape to move forward. Our economics consultant has a little bit more work to do to break out the commercial and industrial, but the good news is that that's all satisfactory in terms of what the DLCD, the state requires for us to show that we're able to do both the housing and the industrial and not affect the required amount of industrial. We've been working with ODOT on the design of the streets and the intersection, especially on Siskiyou, and that'll be part of the traffic impact analysis that Mike was mentioning, and that's now underway. We need to do a critical areas survey that's now underway as well. We're in contact with a biologist who's able to do that. And this is the other thing that I wanted to tell you a little bit about. We're in talks with several experienced affordable housing developers and really excited about that, and we think there's good prospects for recruiting a number of affordable housing developers. We are developing the updated land use and zoning ordinance for the site and the development agreement. I presented that to you in rough form last time, but that's moving forward, and we're proposing an infrastructure finance partnership, which we've talked to you about before as well, a tax increment finance structure, which we think is very important, not just for our site, but not even just for the district, but for the city, to be able to unlock the potential of all of these sites and to do things like the infrastructure needed for affordable housing, to be able to do more affordable housing than we would otherwise be able to do. We think that's a really important piece of this. So as I said, generally, good news happening on the cleanup. If you've been out there lately, you've probably seen them working their way through. The grading, as I mentioned, is, this is a 1998 topographic data, so we need to shoot that again and get that moving, get the site, the stockpiles moved around as they need to. We're going to keep the stripping for, you know, landscaping, but we need to move off some of the other materials, and then, of course, the structural materials can go in to the subgrade for the streets and so on. So things can be happening that are not only part of the cleanup, but part of the construction now. We're excited about that. The pre-app items, I won't go into detail on these, but as I said, there are a lot of moving parts, and these are all going to come before you in the coming months concurrently. We hope to have everything done by the end of the year, which is fairly aggressive, but we think it's doable. You've seen the plan before. I won't go into detail, but just to say that it is a real balance between the employment, the core employment, that's still a key goal, and the housing that we know we so desperately need, and the diversity of housing, not just, you know, one type of housing, and certainly not just the expensive stuff. This is the illustrative plan you've seen that's sort of hovering over Siskiyou, looking to the north, and the inset is showing some of the industrial, light industrial, compatible industrial. So it really is a live, work, play kind of environment where you would be very comfortable being right next door to some of the businesses and, you know, it's not, these are not big trucking distribution centers or whatever. This area to the south is actually in the county, so we're going to have to bring that in through annexation, and as part of that, we're going to have to do a full site plan. We're working on that now, and this is a draft version of that that shows the actual buildings, the actual street landscaping, a lot of details that we're going to need to show, really getting into the specifics of what those buildings look like, what the elevations are, what the floor plans even are and so on. Not to say that that won't change a little bit as we, you know, recruit users and things evolve over time, but we need to start with the specifics. And then on the private side, we have, obviously, the public requirements for design standards and, you know, the zoning requirements and so on, but we'll also have private design guidelines, and we have a document that's well underway that shows any co-developers or builders or other users who come in, what they're going to be required to do in order to keep it consistent with the look and feel of the project, keep it coherent and attractive, attractive public realm, attractive streetscape and so on. Johnson Economics I mentioned has done already a detailed analysis, and they're going to supplement that with a memorandum. That's the economic opportunities analysis for this site that's going to feed into the city's economic opportunities analysis as well. ODOT I mentioned is looking at those intersection designs, and that's two options. One of them is a roundabout on Siskiyou, the other would be just a T-intersection, and actually, it sounds like ODOT prefers the roundabout, and we think that might be a good option as well. So we're really getting into the specifics of a lot of these things, as you can see. And also, there's some wetlands that we need to have delineated as part of the critical areas, and also those will become really nice amenities. You see in the plan to the right, that's a really attractive area that is going to be an amenity for the community as well. And then I mentioned, we're talking to a number of affordable housing developers. This one actually is a former client of mine on another project, a Rinco Station up in Portland, and this is not to say that this would be the kind of building we would do, but it does show you that they are serious about looking at this area, looking at the site, talking to us further about possibly doing, and they do community gardens and they do mixed income, really, we think could be a good fit for this site. The land use code we're going through, and I mentioned this before, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but we're looking at a market-facing, flexible zoning, allowing the best achievement of public goals, we'll commit to those, specify a coherent, walkable public realm, still allowing a mix of uses, an agreed minimum of employment lands within each phase, an agreed minimum of tenant-ready employment spaces, vertical buildings in each phase, climate-friendly areas. This is, I know you've been talking about that in other parts of the city. This is going to be one of the climate-friendly areas, and we're going to, we're just talking about that today, as a matter of fact, what specifically we're going to need to do. We're not modifying the existing Croman Mill District Plan for the other property owners. They can come forward and modify it for themselves if they want to, but we're simply changing the zoning on the Townmaker site, which is the existing mill, actually. We're proposing two new zones, one that's called compatible industrial and commercial mixed use, and one that's residential mixed use. So they're overlapping a little bit. They're not super segregated zones, and then there's a baseline of area for each of those, but there are adjustments that can be made. So if there's an opportunity to do more housing over the commercial, we can do that. If there's an opportunity to do a small commercial or a little store in the residential area, that can be done. And then we would have a development agreement controls that would specify the phasing, the minimum amounts that we would commit to, the infrastructure that would be delivered and so on. And then in each phase, we would commit to a minimum employment land area, minimum building for employment, and a maximum housing area, and also a minimum number of affordable units. And then all that has to be done before we're able to go to the next phase, where once again, we're conditioned to that, and then we go to the next phase and so on. So, and this would all be governed in the development agreement. And we have a draft of that now in development, and we're going to be coming to you with that draft after the staff has reviewed it and we've negotiated the terms of it, and we'll have more to say about that. But it does specify the kind of employment that we're looking for, which is certainly family wage jobs and incubator-type employment that could grow businesses that could become large, but aren't necessarily large to start with, you know, things related to the Ashland DNA, if you will, the creative entrepreneurial things, the food products, the businesses that could become a next Harry and Davids potentially. We're not only talking about small businesses, but they might be accommodating small businesses and creative businesses that are a good fit with the Ashland economic ecosystem, if you will. And sometimes these are in homes, you know. This is what, coming out of COVID, we're seeing a lot more home-based businesses and people working from home and so on. So those lines have blurred considerably. In 2010, we had this plan on the left, and now we're looking at the plan on the right. The magenta areas are the commercial, the dark orange are the light industrial, compatible industrial, the lighter orange is multifamily, and the yellow is single-family. But these are not zones. These are, this is what we call a regulating plan that suggests where these would go. The actual zones would be like so, where, you know, we're actually committing to a certain amount of industrial and a certain amount of residential, a certain amount of affordable and so on in each of those areas. And that's the illustrative plan that I think you've seen before as well, that shows what the building's footprints actually would be and where the streets and alleys and parking and all those sorts of things are, the landscape and so on. So we're getting pretty darn detailed at this point, as you can see, in terms of how it's all working, how the phasing is working, starting along Siskiyou and working our way to the north as the grading gets completed and the cleanup gets completed, working out towards the north as well. And then I mentioned the economics, Jerry Johnson, and also Thad Wilson, who's our consultant on the tax increment finance. And I just want to mention that once more, that we think that's a critical model, not just for us, but for not only the whole district, but the whole city, to be able to do the kinds of things that are so badly needed. You know, if the market was able to deliver affordable housing, we would have more affordable housing. We need these mechanisms, these financial mechanisms, to prime the pump and to get things like the infrastructure to the areas where the affordable housing is, to be able to deliver more affordable housing. You're going to make a threshold commitment, a baseline commitment, but we'd like to greatly exceed that if we can, and we think tax increment finance is one of the tools that will help us and the city to do that. So on that note, welcome any questions or follow-up.
Questions, councillors? councillor Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a few, and thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Going through the packet, I noticed that our permit for cleanup, well, cleanup started, so great. Congratulations and to all those that are interested. And the permit expires in May of this year. I'm sure it can be renewed, but I'm just curious, is that a goal? Do you think the cleanup will be done by May of this year?
So Brandon is going to give you, I think, a more detailed update, and I should just emphasize that we are not the owners of the site who are doing the cleanup, so we're monitoring it, as you are, from, as an interested party, shall we say.
If anybody has an opinion as to whether they think it'll be done by May, I'm interested to know that. Maybe Brandon will cover that.
I certainly hope so, but I don't know. We'll ask Brandon to come in.
And I'm sure he'll be up in a minute. And then in your presentation, the new information to me that came through, maybe it came through last time, I didn't quite get it, but it sounds like the way you're planning to move through development focuses on, yeah, thank you, on that mixed overlap and commercial first, and I'm wondering if there's flexibility in your plan to maybe focus on residential first, since that's our community's need is so high in that area.
We do intend to do residential as well as commercial right off the bat.
Okay, great. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it.
I'll let the developer speak on that.
Well, I think, I think there's an obligation and a commitment to, a requirement, if you will, from the city to make sure that we have, you know, job creation there, but if you, I think if you go back to the annexation, there is, there is some, is it that far?
Back here somewhere. There it is.
But.
And we do have residential in this plan as well, yeah.
D is townhomes.
Right. Row homes and then apartments and, yeah, so there's.
Courtyard apartments and so forth. So there's, it may be easier to see on this slide.
Yeah, apologies that this is not really an illustrative plan. This is more of a technical plan, but, yeah, so we are planning to do both right from the beginning.
Okay. But the density of residential is on the north side of the development, it looked like, and it looked like that was the last phase of your building.
Actually, if you, I'll go back to the other one again. There we go. It really, they, I would say the industrial and commercial is on the left side and the residential is on the right side, pretty much all the way up. But I think we should also emphasize that these things can shift around depending on, if a big user comes along, for example, and wants to take a chunk of that yellow for industrial, we can horse trade in effect. We can, up until the time that the zoning goes into effect, we can change that, and once the zoning goes into effect, we can come back for zone change.
And just kind of a follow-up to that is, I know we've been talking in these various conversations about making sure that we match the commercial and the employment element with the housing, and so I think it's hard to know right now what exactly that looks like and to what extent we will have businesses ready to come in, but I think that that also will have an impact on what types of spaces get built first. And I know there's a lot of interest in the city around that economic development side so that we've got businesses ready to come in right off the bat with these phasings. councillor Kaplan.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very much along the same lines, I guess. It looks to me from this map, and this is very helpful, it looks like the orange, if I'm reading this correctly, is multifamily, so that is the higher-density residential, which would be done partially in the first phase as well, along with some commercial. My question goes along with that is about the density. As a climate-friendly and equitable area, the whole thing would be a minimum of 15 units per acre. Are you targeting, what density are you targeting in each one of the phases, I guess, is what I'm interested in for residential? So that gets at the mix of the kinds of housing that you're talking about, whether there's going to be some more expensive single-family homes together with some lower, more affordable, if not de-restricted affordable, but more affordable, smaller units.
So we were just talking about that this afternoon at our meeting with city staff, as a matter of fact, and, yeah, the, we need to hit the 15 units to the acre on a sort of parcel-by-parcel basis. Yeah, and it's going to be concentrated in the RMU residential mixed-use area, but if somebody came into the other zone and wanted to do a residential building, and it happened to be allowed, which there is some residential allowed there, if it's a freestanding residential building, it would have to also meet the 15 units to the acre. If it's just housing over the existing employment, then that's gravy, if you will. That doesn't have to hit the 15 units to the acre.
And can I follow up on that? So are you looking to just comply with the 15 units? Are you interested in pushing that to 20 or 25 units per acre? Because there's opportunity to go above the minimum.
So I think we're going to go above it in the multifamily, more dense areas, which will allow us to even it out for the single-family area. Does that make sense to you? And the, we want to also make sure that it maintains a livable character, and Michael can speak more to that, but if you go too dense, you lose that element.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a balancing act.
I mean, I showed a slide earlier of Rinco Station in Portland, which reaches about a, well, in some parts of it, it's almost 100 units to the acre net, but gross, it's about 20 units to the acre, something like that. And it's really important to have the green spaces and the parks and, you know, everybody have a pocket park within about 750 feet of their home, that sort of thing, to make it not feel like it's, you know, an overly dense place.
Okay. I'll do the follow-up question.
Yes.
Thank you. That makes, obviously, it makes a lot of sense, and definitely, one of the attractions of this is that it would be dense, would have provided a volume of housing that we think we need, but also be very walkable and very livable. Part of that has to do with transportation connections, and you mentioned conversations with ODOT. You didn't mention conversations with Rogue Valley RV TD.
Transit, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, because the bus line doesn't go through there right now. Have you had conversations with them about the possibility of extending the bus line to come through there in some fashion?
We have a plan for the bus line to go through, and there's actually three stops total. One of them is just at the edge, and then there are two that are inside, and, yeah, we'd like to see more frequent service, among other things.
And we've had an initial conversation with SOU, and they're very supportive, and we would look to you and any other entities, because right now, the bus runs every half hour. We think ideally, it should run every 10 minutes. Worst case should be 15 minutes. It also doesn't run, I'm not sure if my number is correct, but it doesn't run after 5:00.
A little later, a little later.
Okay.
And it doesn't run on Sunday. Yeah, no, it's, there's a longstanding concern, that it's the frequency of the bus, and part of that is because you've got to get the volume in order to justify the frequency, and so it's a bit of a chicken and egg. So if there's some way that you can help to, with this development, help to jumpstart that and change that, change that chicken and egg, you know, paralysis, it'd be great.
Well, and it's particularly interesting that, now, the last few years have been the exception, but people that are going to the theater, you know, they get out at 11:00, you know. You could eliminate a lot of cars if there was the appropriate transportation.
I think it's also worth mentioning that there is the hike and bike trail that'll be going along the railroad line all the way up to the railroad district, and, you know, people will be able to hopefully live, work, and play within that community. So it's not just the transit. Transit is very important, but it's also the walkability, bikeability, many different ways to get around.
Great, thank you. councillor Duquesne.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you. Great question. So something that was brought up earlier was commercial property or housing, which happens first, and it kind of has to happen simultaneously. And looking at what you mentioned before, affordable housing, which is all relative, square footage-wise, what do you mean by affordable?
The size of the unit, you mean?
Yes, the size of the units, and what would you consider affordable?
So the specific requirements that we will have will be a certain number of units in the annexed piece, the county annexed piece, and there's a sliding scale, you may know, it's a 60% AMI, 80% AMI, 120. Depending on where you hit that, it's, that's the percentage of that particular kind of unit that's required, or the number that's required. It doesn't specify the size of the unit, though. So obviously, a smaller unit is more, theoretically more affordable, but it may not be suitable for a family, for example. So you need, I think our view, and Mike, please correct me if you see it differently, is that we want a diversity of sizes, not just small units. Small units can help with the price, the overall price, but then the square foot cost goes up, so you need a diversity.
So in the last couple of weeks, we've been reaching out to affordable housing developers, and, you know, there's going to be some conversations because we want the affordable units pepper-potted throughout the project, number one. Number two, they need to still comply with our design guidelines, and there's, this is an area that I'm just starting to learn about. I mean, it's not in the normal realm of what I've done, but I But I, we met with a affordable housing attorney last, a week ago today. I think it was a week ago today. But those are all things that, that, you know, we want to address. We're also getting ready to hire a branding and marketing company that will do a market analysis. And while that's primarily for market rate, I think, you know, we can direct them to look at the affordable component of it. But it's, it's really the affordable housing developers that are going to, to a certain extent, drive that. But we're happy to take input and, and let them know that, that they need to be aware of the diversity of, of who goes to, you know, what size a unit would be.
And as you know, the city has adopted the housing needs analysis and moving forward with the housing action plan. And we're, we have a responsibility to address that in our application. And we can certainly look specifically at the affordable needs that are in that report and address, you know, how many larger families do we have? How many single, single people or couples, et cetera? And try to understand what the square foot needs are.
The, the other thing to add on to that is we would love to hear from all of you as to who might be an appropriate affordable housing developer. And also keep your ears open for where grant money may be for affordable. Because, you know, I think as we spoke last time, this is a collaborative effort. And every bit helps.
Thank you. I appreciate that because we all know how important true affordable housing is in, in this community. And I just, I, I saw in your slide how you mentioned so many people, especially after the pandemic, are working from home, and that's wonderful. But moving forward in this process to have businesses come in where people can have paid living wage jobs is so desperately needed and important also.
Absolutely. And we're committed to that, too.
Thank you. So we have two more hands up. And then just a reminder that we've got another section on town, on this particular Croman Mill before we get on to the other topic of the evening. So Councilor Bloom?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for, well, thank you, Councilor Duquesne, for kind of leading us into that conversation. So when we talk about affordable housing, are we talking about rental and ownership? Or one of the other, talking about both? So we have a kind of a, we call it a middle income housing work group that's very interested in this, in this question. And already they've identified that we're looking at the 50 to 120% of AMI range. And so just something to maybe keep on your radar is that it would be a shame to get locked into one economic bracket, that there's kind of this, this middle range that's really suffering. And having a little bit for, for each of those groups would be, would be really helpful.
Absolutely agree. Yep.
And, and we want to focus on attainable housing as well.
Right.
And there's a lot of nuances to that.
Yeah, affordable is a bit of a legal definition.
And it's, yeah, and then not only the, you know, affordable, AMI affordable, you might say, but also housing diversity, to accommodate different needs and different stages of life. And, you know, people who are elderly, people who are young, et cetera.
And I'll just throw this out. It's, it's my belief that a lot of the help, especially for attainable, is going to come from the corporations.
Yeah.
They need to assist their employees. That's my opinion.
Great. Well, I'll definitely take this information back to them because this is, we're trying to move at a rapid pace to develop some, some solutions that we can probably work together on. So thank you.
Councilor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here this evening. I appreciate the presentation. One quick, quick clarifying question and then one full-on question. When you mentioned the, the bike path that's going to be part of Croman, are you intending on linking into Ashland Central Bike Path with that piece?
Yes, the one along the railroad track. Yeah, that goes all the way into town.
Perfect. Because I'm, I know you said and to the railroad, but I just wanted to make sure I was understanding railroad correctly. My second question is with regard to annexation, there's often those affordable unit requirements. And if in those ownership units, if you're going to be looking to deed restrict those to say 80% AMI?
We really need to talk to the developers, the affordable housing developers, about their specific models because they, I mean, as Mike was saying, it's such a complex field and there's so many requirements that they're meeting from their funders and their tax credits and, and so on. But I think it's fair to say we want to have long-term affordable housing, not just something that ratchets up.
And that's exactly what I'm getting to. I wouldn't want it to be sold at an affordable, to someone with the affordable, we're going to put air quotes around it for the purpose of the conversation, and then two years later have it sold at like a market rate at greater than 120%.
Yeah, so I've started a conversation with a land trust, and they do a 99-year lease.
Okay.
Now, whether it's them or somebody else, I don't know. But I, I think it's kind of useless to do it the other way.
So it's part of the conversation?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Great. I have a question for staff, if that's okay. Well, we're, I'm about to bring Brandon back up to talk about the DEQ side, so if it's-
It's on this for staff.
Yeah, but we'll start with that when we bring him up. So Brandon, if you can come up, and we'll start with Councilor Hyatt's question, and then you can update us on the DEQ element of all of this.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you both so much for your presentation.
We'll be back in a few months, and hopefully have more good news. Thank you.
Very good. It's always good to see you and hear the updates, see the good progress. Councilor Hyatt?
Brandon, quick question. As wonderful and as helpful as these updates are, I'm sure soon planning action will begin, especially given the timeline of 2024 that was just kind of briefly touched upon. When do we get into the realm of having ex parte contact with these conversations? And what are we looking at in terms of timeline?
So the, as soon as a formal application is submitted, the Townmakers has gone through a pre-app, but they've not yet submitted a formal application for review. Once they do, that quasi judicial land use process is started. And so we would, at that point, caution you, as you know, that it would come back before you for a decision, that the Planning Commission and the City Council should avoid ex parte contact. So updates from Townmakers LLC on this topic would stop after the submission of a formal application.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and you'll let us know when that arrives in the office?
Yes.
Yes, okay, wonderful.
And one point of clarification in terms of, and I know I wasn't asked this question, but on the affordable housing requirement, for the annexed portion of property, our code requires a percentage of those units be affordable. Those required units have to have a deed restriction on them for a minimum of a 30-year term for ownership, a 60-year term for rental. For voluntarily provided affordable housing units that go beyond that level, we offer incentives through SDC waivers for a 30-year term of affordability. But again, that wouldn't necessarily be required above those minimum number. Yeah.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the next agenda item.
Well, it is a related item, as I know that Townmakers LLC is as anxious to see the property cleaned up, to move forward with their development proposal as the city is and the property owners are as well. I did want to note that there has been forward momentum on this project since we last met. On November 20th, SCS Engineering submitted a report to DEQ for an interim cleanup plan. And that project, or that plan was approved by DEQ. I should introduce Greg Akins, who is a temporary employee for the city, and we're fortunate to have him. He has a career behind him, working for DEQ. So given the complexity of a lot of the information provided in the report, it's been vital to have somebody like Greg working on behalf of the city to both interpret it and ask the right questions to DEQ. And so he's here to answer any questions that you guys might have with a little bit more experience behind it. Essentially, the cleanup, the interim cleanup plan is a, identified three areas of contamination. Two former Wigwam burners are, that were located on the site that do have contamination, but the contamination is such that the material can be excavated from there and readily disposed of. The third area was where the wood treatment plant, portion of the former mill site was, and the contaminants within that area are of a higher order. And as such, the interim cleanup action plan identified removal of those sites to a qualified landfill that has to accept those. As of last week, and confirming, conferring with DEQ, that site has not yet been identified as to where that material would be taken. So it is a two-step process. DEQ has approved that it is suitable to go to a landfill, but a landfill has to accept that. So that is something that our understanding, the property owners are working on at this time. The additional question that was asked initially from Councilor Hanson in terms of the expiration date, you're correct. May is the termination date for the existing interim cleanup action plan. However, as you noted, if the applicant requests a DEQ and extension, they can get a six-month extension to that. So it would be through essentially the end of this year. However, in discussing it with both the property owners, Croman Mills, Representative Mike Montero, as well as DEQ, they indicated the cleanup of these two Wigwam sites would begin in the end of 2023 or beginning of 2024. It has not occurred at the end of 2023, but our hope is that they are still looking forward to beginning that, trucking out that material this month or next. But again, that's at the property owner's discretion at this point. There is some change in terms of the activity on the site to bring the council up to speed. Historically, they had been removing wood waste material and other waste from the site that was not part of those contaminated areas. In consultation and discussion with DEQ, we requested that they provide a recognition that those materials were clean, solid waste. And as such, DEQ has concurred and requested further information on that material before removing it from the site to give it a clean fill determination. And once that determination is made, it can be relocated off of this property anywhere else. Without that determination, it's our understanding that they would be in a position to either take it to a landfill under DEQ solid waste department's review and approval. So again, I think that Townmakers LLC is correct to see this as a promising step, that the property owners have gone through the expense of having the interim cleanup plan created. DEQ has reviewed and approved it. And so at this stage, the next step is really to start excavating those contaminated sites and removing the materials. However, that doesn't conclude the cleanup of the property. It's named interim for a reason. As soon as that's done, additional testing would have to be done to ensure that they removed all the contaminants on site, or an, an alternative remediation plan would have to be developed. And unless you have anything to add, we can take questions.
Councilor Kaplan?
Yeah, thank you very much, Brandon. You've answered some of my questions, but I just wanted a clarification on the two different kinds of excavations that, operations that could take place, and they're both about 600 yards, cubic yards, I think, each of about 600 cubic yards. One could proceed immediately because there is a location for, for removal and, and deposit. Is there any requirement that they take place at the same time? Or could they actually start, could the owner actually start with the first place that's already ready to go while still searching for an appropriate landfill for the more hazardous material?
I believe the answer is yes, but is that typically done?
Yes, Counselor, that, that is certainly feasible. I, I don't believe DEQ would have any issue with that. And in fact, what I am hearing from DEQ is that that's likely to be the case here, that the property owner would like to get a start as soon as possible. They believe they have a clear path forward to address those two Wigwam burners. The wood treatment area is still a problem for them in terms of finding the ultimate disposal option. So my understanding is they will likely proceed with those two Wigwam burner areas, get, get those taken care of and sampled, hopefully resolved quickly, and then deal with the wood treatment area.
Another question. Thank you. So on the, on the, the second area where they need to find appropriate disposal locations, are there requirements, I mean, there are obviously requirements for the suitability of the location. Is it, is there a geographic distance or something that's also, or the mode of transport or anything else that's, that would restrict or make more complicated finding those kinds of locations to deposit that material? What are we looking at? Are we looking at something that's a really difficult?
No, I, my understanding is it could be Dry Creek landfill. The issue is a, I'm not sure how to frame it, but that the landfill would be taking on the liability of having that material on their property. And so that's the agreement that is between the property owner and the landfill.
Got it, thank you.
Councilor Hanson?
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Brandon. The document refers to two roughly 600 cubic yard scenarios. But then in the document, it just referred to one of the 600 yard portions. So I just wanted to double check that, that they're, the two are in play, they're, they're totaling about 1,200 yards. And I think that's about 300 dump truck loads, more or less.
Depending on the size of the dump truck.
Right, depending on, you know, average four cubic yard size. So that's, I'm just trying to approximate time and efficiency and all that stuff. But thank you for the report. I appreciate it.
And if, if I may, may actually add to that, too. The 1,200 cubic yards is purely an estimate. Once they get out there and start digging, you know, they, they need to have the flexibility to alter that. They wouldn't likely decrease the amount. There's a potential they could increase it if there's indications, field indications of additional contamination that they might want to address at the time. And then, of course, don't forget that after that initial excavation and after sampling and analyzing the soil, if the results are unfavorable, they'll be back at it for more.
Right. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions? Councilor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here on this one. My question is probably just more what the working environment is like. It feels to me like there's much improved communication between property owner, DEQ, city, interested buyer, and that those channels of communication are facilitating this at a faster clip. Do you feel, since you're closer to the work, that that is in fact the case?
Yeah, I would say there's been a market change over the last year from both the responsiveness of the property owner to the city and to DEQ. And our communication with DEQ has been increased quite a bit. They're keeping us informed as information is made available to them, which has been very helpful.
And it sounds like, Mr. Aiken, you've been essential to some of that as well. So thank you for being the translator, so to speak. I appreciate the work.
Great. Thank you, and thank you both. It's so good to see this moving, and it's great to have some specialists on our staff to help us navigate it. All of a sudden, there's, there's action happening in a couple of different sites around town that are really key to helping us meet our housing and commercial space and industrial space needs. So thank you very much for the update and for answering our questions. And again, thank you to Townmakers as well. It's looking, looking very positive, and we hope you find the landfill soon. We hope the owners do. So we move on now to the severe weather, emergency shelter, temperature thresholds discussion. As we line up, I just wanted to give folks an understanding of why we're having this conversation this evening. So we have had conversations around a variety of different issues over the last several months. And if we can have quiet in the space, please? Maybe if you can take that conversation into the hall? Thank you. The, there's been, there was a question among the council about whether we wanted to look at the thresholds to make them more consistent with what happens regionally and to, to create a more consistent policy. And staff has brought back to us information about what it would take to do that, to make that, those, our thresholds more consistent with other folks in the valley. What the council will do tonight is decide whether, whether it wants to direct staff to come back with a change to fully align with those regional standards, or to partially align with those standards, or to not change the current thresholds we have. So what we're doing tonight is simply directing staff in one of those three ways. So what we're doing tonight is simply directing staff in one of those three ways. So with that, I will pass it over to Sabrina, who can queue us up. And if you have signed up to speak, just know that we will have the staff presentation. We'll have question and answer by council first, and then we'll bring people up to speak. Sabrina?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's just me tonight. Kelly Burns is at Emergency Manager Training in preparation for fire season, which seems like a good place for him to be. So as the mayor just described, several months ago, council requested this information, and due to a series of events on the agenda, we are now just getting to it, so thank you for your patience. So in the packet, we have outlined our current resolution, as well as some examples of what other communities within the state of Oregon are doing. The biggest change between our resolution and others is the temperature thresholds in which we call for the cold weather, extreme heat, and then I believe air quality is pretty similar to everyone else. We have also indicated on our communication the fiscal impacts of the difference in temperature. What is similar between our resolution and our neighboring resolutions around calling severe weather shelter is the impact of exposure to not just temperature, but also precipitation, wind, days of cold, things like that. So all of that are factors that are going into the decision of whether or not to call a severe weather shelter. What we find difficult with our resolution from a staff perspective is we feel that a weather shelter needs to be called when it hits 32 degrees regardless of what's happening the next day, which resulted in a few days this fall, calling the severe weather shelter at 32 degrees when we had warm temperatures the next day. So I think part of it is just learning this resolution. It is fairly new to staff of when to call, and also having a partner like we do this time and a building, which is helpful. So the fact that we have a severe weather shelter that is steady and owned by us is new, as well as having a professional partner to execute the standing up of a shelter is new to us. So there are some things we are working through this year with the shelter that we have not experienced before because we have additional resources. I do have one typo I'd like to point out just to help with any confusion. We have Monmouth listed as an attachment. It's actually Monmouth County that we have that is an example, so just so close, right there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Bloom?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, part of the conversation has to do with the budget, right, and how much money we have to be able to operate. So what, you know, draw a scenario here where we get to, you know, into, into summer or winter and we run out of money. What's, what's the process? What do we do?
So we would have to come to council and ask for contingency to be appropriated.
Okay, great. Just a quick follow-up on the financial question. So aside from the financials, what benefits do we have in changing this policy, changing the thresholds?
It's really just a policy decision. I think in talking with Ora, we are a severe weather shelter that is called fairly regularly at a higher temperature versus our neighboring communities, so we have become a place where people can come to seek shelter in bad weather. We have gotten notes as far as Grants Pass thanking us for standing up our shelter, so it is known in the valley as a severe weather shelter that will open prior to other shelters opening.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Sabrina, you mentioned Grants Pass. My recollection is Grants Pass doesn't even have a shelter this year. Is that true?
I can't speak to that, but I did see a news article where Grants Pass, I believe, did recently open a shelter for severe weather, but I would have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Thank you, Sabrina. And to tag on to Counselor Bloom's question, really, I wanted to back up and remind us in this last biennium what we budgeted for, for our shelter.
So in total, we have $200,000 for shelter.
Okay.
For severe weather shelter.
And could you, could you remind us how the shelter is, is broken up into our, our two populations? Like, how, how large is the, just let everybody know how large those, those two, like we have 28 beds that are full right now. How, how much space do we have in the severe weather portion of it?
Yeah, thank you. So I think it's important to make the distinction. We have two shelters going on, which we haven't had before. So the 24/7 shelter is not part of this conversation. That is a 30-bed 24/7 shelter, different from the severe weather shelter. The severe weather shelter holds, I believe, 28 folks. It is a low-to-no-barrier shelter that is very bare minimum. It is a room where people can get outside of the elements, and that is basically it. And so they're allowed to come in in the evening, and they leave in the morning.
And has our facility been adequate? Have we been filling it up with 20 people?
Yeah, so I think Dylan can speak to that because, or Councilmember Bloom, because he has volunteered there, but it depends on the night. So when we call a singular night, we tend to see less visitors. When we have sustained poor weather, we see an increase. So we have been full, I believe, one or two nights, which again is around 28 people, but I think on average 10 to 12.
That was my next question. Have we had to turn people away?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Counselor Dukey?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I have a couple of questions, but more comments. One of my questions is, when you look at air quality, it says, is it 101 to 150 unhealthy? Or is it to 151 to 200?
So for an index of 150 and above is what we would call the severe weather shelter.
150 and above. So when I was looking online and I saw the index, it said 101 to 150 is unhealthy for sensitive people, and then 151 to 200 was unhealthy. So I didn't know if we're talking about sensitive people, and I say that because I remember in August, it was terrible. And I just, I look at the unhealthy for sensitive people and then unhealthy. I mean, I, I look at a moral compass, and I think that 150, I mean, 51 to 100, moderate. 80 degrees when it's hot outside and leaving, I mean, 32 degrees. The other day, it was 46 degrees. It was freezing outside. I, I, I don't support, if we change it, I don't support this. I, I support going higher.
Do you have any other questions for, for staff?
So this thing in direction, if I, if I'm correct, Mayor, the direction is that we would give staff if we want to make some changes, right?
We will, but at this point in the evening, we're asking questions of staff, so we'll have time to deliberate and share our thoughts.
All right.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. I also, I wasn't on the council as, as three of you were when this, when this work was done back in 2022. I know that the Housing and Services Committee spent six months or so, or some, sometime anyway, looking at what should be the appropriate levels for heat, for cold, for air quality, and came up with this recommendation. And then, and then it was approved by the council unanimously, all six, all six counselors.
He had an absence that night. It was fine.
Thank you. So, but it was approved unanimously. Sabrina, I heard you say that there are things that have changed since then. Well, let me say one more thing about that. That recommendation and that approval was done even knowing that Medford at that time had their policy in place, which was significantly lower. Their policy's been in place for several years. Sabrina, you mentioned that several things have changed, but it seems like the things that have changed are things that make it easier to stand up the shelter, not harder. I mean, thinking back to that time, we didn't have a building. Now we do have a building, so we have better access to it. We have a partner that's able to find the volunteers or the personnel easier. Previously, when we tried to stand up a severe weather shelter, it was a hunt for, for volunteers. So it seems like all of these things are factors that make it, you know, not really necessary to change, other than just the, the fiscal cost of it, and we should be prudent with our, with our, with our tax dollars, of course, but there's not an operational imperative to change it, it sounds to me. Is that correct? There's not an operational need to change it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. And then you, you clarified for Counselor Bloom that if we were to go over the $100,000 per year or the $200,000 per biennium, we would have to find, we'd decide whether to allocate money from the contingency. What is the size of the contingency these days at this point? Do you, do you know? Do you remember?
Millions. I'd have to check.
Yeah, I think it's like 1.7, yes, in that range. Yeah, okay. So there would be resources to keep it open for longer if we decided that we needed to do that, if we ran out of money because we kept it open more than budgeted.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm glad we're coming back to this threshold conversation because as, as you mentioned, we're coming around the winter and, and we have this new procedural element, but we haven't yet hit an extreme heat or a smoke season yet with it. And one of the things that, that I think we, that I look at is that question of when do we call it? So we have it as 95 degrees in there, but what we know is that during the day, when it does hit 95 degrees, the library's open, and there are public places that are open that are air-conditioned that people can get to. Where we run into health problems is when it doesn't cool down enough at night for someone's core body temperature to come down. And so we may want to, you know, I can imagine, I know a couple of years ago, we, we had what seemed to be five weeks of over 100-degree heat all kind of stacked together. And so I would, when I start to think about fiscally what this looks like, if we're calling those shelters every single time we get over 95 degrees, then I think that starts to, that starts to really have a much bigger fiscal impact. So we may want to think about, is there, is there a refinement? It mentions in here that this, these additional factors around, you know, how, how long potential hours per day, consecutive days, that kind of thing. Do you, how, how is that looking at the staff level in terms of knowing what to do with extreme heat? Is it just automatically if it's going to hit 95, we call it? Or how does, do you have any flexibility in that space?
So I believe the resolution gives us flexibility with both cold and heat because it adds considerations in the language. I think where we run into issues is we have to do this days ahead of time with our partners for staffing reasons and the expectation of the community that when we hit these thresholds, regardless of other weather factors that we open. So when it comes to heat, you're correct, we're looking for sustained heat where it's not cooling off. Just 95 degrees for a day will not trigger the severe weather shelter. Heat is easier. Heat is the easiest element out of all three of these scenarios because it potentially cools off at night. We potentially don't need to open with 95 degrees because of what you've said, there's cooling options within the city that wouldn't require us to open the shelter. Now, if we see temperatures sustained, not getting, you know, below 80 at night, things like that, we're going to want to consider opening because there's no chance for anyone to cool off, and that presents health risks. Smoke presents a particular challenge because it's not like that goes away at night, or, you know, that will be a 24/7 situation potentially for weeks, right? And so looking at the cost of a shelter being around $1,500 is one thing. To have to open for smoke where there is no break for weeks, then we're getting into potential cost considerations and the need to come back to ask for more resources.
Thank you. That's, yeah, I think there's a, there's a fair amount of flex in what this could look like any given year, depending on how the summer or winter, different kinds of elements look.
I will say what's tricky for staff is earlier in the season, knowing, so calling a severe weather shelter in November, not knowing what the rest of the winter or the summer is going to look like, right, given our fiscal years. You know, how prudent do we be? Do we just hit the temperature threshold? Do we consider, you know, holding off if there's no rain? I think that's where staff struggles, the expectation we open at 32 degrees regardless versus other considerations coming to play. As many people have spoken, precipitation is the biggest factor on health risk when it comes to cold. So if it's a clear night and 32 degrees and 50 degrees the next day, do we need to call that shelter? I think that's where Kelly and I debate on what's the right thing to do.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I mean, in a way, it's, it's nice that this is coming forward because kind of dig into the older resolutions. So I'm, I'm curious, the one that we currently have, does that supersede all previous resolutions?
Correct.
Because I noticed in the, in the past, and, and it's the case with other municipalities, that they kind of have a terms and conditions, and they've got rules and guidelines and structure and, you know, cots have to be a certain, you know, space apart. You have to provide, you know, space for women if they want to be separated from, from a group of men. And in our current resolution, we don't really have any of that. And so that's something that I'd really like to have a conversation about also is, is maybe we need to have a little bit more structure around this rather than this kind of, here's a temperature and then hope that somebody figures it out, because as I have volunteered there, I, I don't think that the conditions are, are adequate. And I think that we have a responsibility to have some structure in there because it is a little bit of a free-for-all and, and concerning, so.
Any other questions for staff? Counselor Hanson?
Not a question, just so much an observation for the room. In reading the document previously in 2013, our threshold was 20 degrees. I thought that was interesting and good, good background to share with the community.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and, and bring folks up in the following order who would like to speak. You'll come up to these two microphones, and you'll come up two at a time, and then please just speak in the order that I've, that I've called you. Please give your name and the city where you live. Each person will have, we have seven people. Let's do two minutes per person. Dana will help us with the chimes. What she'll do is she'll keep time at the, when you have 20 seconds left, she'll give you a single chime. When your time is done, she'll give you a double chime, at which point, please finish the sentence that you're on, and, and, and then we'll move on to the next speaker. So the first person we have is Echo Fields, and then Amy Cuddy, followed by, is it Aki? Aki Robinson? And Vanessa Houck?
I was one of the people who drafted the current policy with Rich Reddy, Joy Fate, and the always admirable assistance of Linda Reed pursuant to a council directive in 2021. What you have in your packet tonight includes some of the work that we did starting in 2021, and it took about a year for that work to get acted upon by council at that time. I've been in the middle of this for a long time. So the trick is to balance the needs of public health with what I know are the resource constraints of the city. Lowering the temperature threshold for warming shelter to 25 degrees puts life at risk. If, and Dylan knows this because thank you for volunteering there. I was there this morning dropping off some breakfast casseroles, and when you look around the room at who's in the 24/7 shelter, and I'm assuming it's pretty much similar to the population in the warming shelter, we're seeing a lot of elders in the shelters. We're seeing old folks, and old bodies are particularly sensitive to temperature, both cold and heat. So changing these thresholds in a direction that puts more people at health risk, for me, is deeply troubling. Medications don't work as well, are really affected by heat, for example. What I do know is difficult is the smoke stuff. It's really hard to predict what smoke is going to be. We live with this. And to actually do adequate smoke shelter, we would, we would have to have overnight, and that's really hard. I don't know how to fix that one, except I know we're going to have to work on that because I've had this conversation with Kelly. So I'm, I'm strongly encouraging you to leave the temperature trigger for warming shelter at 32. at 32. We've gone back and forth between 95 and 98 degrees on heat shelter. I could say a lot more because I know a lot more, but my time's up. So please feel free to call on me at any time if I can help.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Amy Cuddy. I've been an Ashland resident for almost 40 years now, and I want to start by thanking you for your service to our community. I know you all have taken on a very challenging and time-consuming role, and I for one appreciate it. On a much smaller way, in a much smaller way, I contribute to our community by volunteering at the two shelters on Ashland Street, and by that I mean the 24/7 shelter and the emergency weather shelter. In fact, my afternoon today was shopping and prepping for the hot breakfast that I'll be cooking and serving tomorrow morning. And I want to speak to you specifically about the temperature for the winter shelter. And in my opinion, 25 degrees is inhumane, and I think Ashland is better than that. I don't want to comment on surrounding communities, just our own. I know you have competing budget priorities to address, and that's a challenging role. When there are competing priorities, I think it's important to start with the basics, and to me, nothing could be more basic than keeping people from freezing to death on our streets. So I ask you to consider that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aki Robinson? Did I say that correctly? Okay, great. And then Vanessa Houck, followed by Jason Houck and Debbie Nyswander. Go ahead.
My name is Aki Robinson. I am an architectural designer at a local firm in Ashland. I live in Ashland, and I am very opposed to the change of the temperature threshold. I think that anything below 32 and above 95 is already really extreme, and I think that to leave our community members outside when it's below freezing and unbearably hot outside is really inhumane and harmful, and I think it's just going to cause more deaths to our county. So I would strongly urge you to not change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Houck, and I live in Ashland. I'm actually just going to read this letter that I've sent to all of you approximately a month or so ago, and in it I say, "Sometimes late at night when I'm trying to fall asleep, there's a terrible parade of people who wander at the edge of my dreams. They're the people who've lost their lives to exposure and weather-related tragedies in and around Ashland. I can't remember all their names anymore, and some I can't forget." Bennett Tanner. He was often called the sock puppet guy because he made puppets and had elaborate storytelling sessions. His body was discovered in Lithia Park. A father and his 14-year-old son had been camping in Ashland but left town and wandered closer to Mount Ashland. There was a harsh storm, and a tree fell on their tent, killing the father. The boy fled and was rescued. Can you imagine how much trauma he's experienced? Another father who was camping on the greenway while waiting for a bed to open up at the detox center. His body was found next to his dog, who was trying to protect him. His son is growing up without a father. About a week after a two-month-old baby was removed from her parents' care, a man died from exposure just steps away from where that family camped. Advocates believe that the baby might have lost her life too had she not landed in foster care. I can imagine his relief when an area agency gifted a 40-something-year-old man a new tent shortly before a big storm hit one winter. What everyone failed to notice was that it was made for summer temperatures and would not withstand the upcoming storm. The man was also sick with the flu, and when the tent collapsed, he did his best to survive the night, but he died from hypothermia. An elderly woman who was living in her van near Safeway was found and taken to the Ashland Hospital, where she stayed in the ICU for about a week, treated for hypothermia. There have been so many people who stood in front of us who were at risk of dying and were saved from those emergency weather shelter nights, and I just ask each of you to remember that your legacy is what you decide on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Houck, Debbie Nyswander, and Ruby Nickel.
Tough act to follow.
Yeah, right?
Hi, I'm Jason Houck. I live in Ashland, and I'm just glad we're talking about this. I'm really proud to have, in the past, partnered to provide emergency weather shelter in Ashland, and we're, and I agree that the, in order to do it, requires a lot of structure, a lot of planning, and a lot of commitment from volunteers, and I'm glad we're talking about this. As you can imagine, I'm opposed to decreasing the temperature threshold, and I know every time we've had, maintained shelters, whenever we've been able to open these shelters, we always reach people we've never met before, and we've helped people, and we plug people into services. So I'm all for, anytime we can get folks into a shelter is great. I just, and so I'm against changing the temperature. Also, I just wanted to, I'm glad we're also talking about the summer heat because it's going to be, it's going to be a scorcher this year, and on top of being able to provide shelter, we need to coordinate with our safety and fire departments to provide water and making sure people have access to cool spaces. And again, on the smoke, yeah, the smoke's 24 hours. We can't just have a smoke shelter that goes until the library closes, and we need to prepare for those 24-hour shelters. And providing masks too, because our folks will wear them if we get folks masks. So anything we can do to give the staff the freedom to feel that they are empowered to open shelters? Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Debbie Nyswander, and I live in Ashland, and of course, I oppose this, and I've talked to it before, you know, and I'm just really trying to understand the method behind the madness. And with your policies, plans, and goals supported, I don't understand it. I wish we could have spoke before your conversation. I don't know how it supports public safety, and I wish Kelly was here to address that as well. And also including emergency preparedness for climate change risk, I just don't get it. It seems like to me that there's some sort of hidden agenda, and talking to a lot of folks out on the street, the consensus is that Ashland doesn't want to make folks comfortable. They want to run them out of town. And I'm doing everything I can to, well, I hope I can change that mindset somehow. Also, I'm just going to tell you that for cooling shelter, we had five days activated last summer with seven to 16 folks in attendance. For the Clean Air Center, we had it activated four days with one to four people in attendance. Let's see, Saturday night, we had 11 people at the emergency weather shelter, and then when I left Saturday night, there was only nine folks there, and I think it's harder for Medford folks to come when it's only a couple nights, and the bus doesn't run on Sunday, so they would have gotten stuck here in town. But when we did run consecutive days, we were full every single night. And yes, there were people from Medford, and it doesn't cost anything more to have a full house, and I always encourage it, and I'm actively out there looking for people to go to shelter. I also want to say last night, we struggled within the night on with all of us trying to come up with a tent, a tarp, a sleeping bag for somebody who had nothing because all their stuff had just been stolen. So there's a lot more that you just don't see, and I hope you really, really take it all into consideration when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Nickel?
Hi, I'm Ruby Nickel. I didn't think I'd be up here all by myself. So we don't ask to be homeless. I wasn't planning on talking, but we don't ask to be homeless. You know, once you get down here, it's almost impossible to get out. I had a friend who was killed. He was one of my homeless buddies, and he told me, "We have this culver that we get stuck in, and every time we try to crawl up, we get pulled back down," or something pushes us down or something. Never understood until I experienced it. I've got 17 years sobriety, and everybody thinks that I have relapse, and I haven't. I'm amazed that I'm still sober and clean after everything I've gone through. I've been homeless for six out of seven years. I've stayed in the shelters, you know, and now I live in a van that's broken down. And let me tell you, at 30 degrees, it's so cold. I text Vanessa at like 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, and I cry, and I'm like, "It is so cold. How do you get warm?" It doesn't matter how many blankets you have. It doesn't matter how many thermals you wear. It doesn't matter how many wool socks you wear. It's bone chilling, and once you get cold, you can't get warm. I had to walk today, and I'm still cold because my clothes got sweaty, and I don't have many clothes to change into. I'm still wearing those sweaty, cold clothes, you know? And, you know, you talked about, you know, like the shelter and the heat and all that. Well, in the winter, in the summertime, you can take off clothes, you know? You can cool off. You can get into the creek. Summertime or the wintertime, you can't. You know, there's many of them, we're always asking, "How do we get thermals for these people? How do we get jackets for these people? How do we get coats?" And, you know, how do we do it? And we have no answers. And now you're asking them to lower the temperature and make it even worse for them? Please don't. It's going to make more people in the hospital or die. Please, don't.
Are there any final questions of staff before we go into deliberations? So our job this evening is to direct staff with what the next step will look like, and I think the best way to do that, to get a sense of the body, is to simply go around and let us know if you are interested in having a discussion about staff changing the thresholds. If you would like to have that conversation, then we can focus the conversation there. If the body is interested in doing that, we can focus the conversation there, and that will help us make better use of our evening and get through this faster. Are there, does that sound okay? Would you, you would like to start? Okay, go ahead, Councilor Hyatt.
I have the benefit of being at the December 6, 2022 meeting where this was adopted unanimously. I made that motion. I voted in support. I stand by that vote. I feel the policy that came forward from HHS, Echo and her team, was very well researched, based in science and public health recommendation. It's very well reasoned and it's responsible. I have no desire to seek a change.
Councilor Bloom?
Thank you. I don't think that we need to change the threshold, but I would like to have a conversation around what I was speaking to earlier about kind of building some structure around this. You know, Medford, some of the other communities had some interesting thoughts, you know, one staff per 25 occupants, not less than two. Currently, there's only one. Just how can we make this safer and better environment? So maybe that's not the discussion for tonight. If it's just about changing the threshold, I'm fine with where it's at, but I do think we need to look at some of this other stuff.
Councilor Kaplan?
I'm not interested in changing the thresholds.
Councilor Duquesne?
I agree with what has been said earlier, something that I read and I saw that 580 people died last winter and 38 people in Jackson County from exposure. I am not interested in changing the thresholds. I would like to look at the smoke, which was brought up earlier, that smoke is very effective, so I might want to look at that, but the rest I'm fine with. Something that, when, one of the first things that I ever requested on council was that we find a permanent weather shelter. So I'm grateful we have one, and I just want to do it right. I agree with Councilor Bloom. I would like to see that on the look ahead so that we can discuss how the shelter is being managed and do it right. I think that's very important.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also am not in favor of changing the temperature thresholds. I am disappointed as a community that we have only budgeted $100,000 a year, yet made the commitment to keep those who land on our doorstep safe. And if that's not enough money to do that, then I would like to talk about our budgeting and our contingency. But again, that's probably another discussion. Glad to know that our contingency is adequate for the current biennium, and it seems irresponsible to set out with this line item the way it is, but we're locked in for the next, this year and next, so let's deal with it, and I agree with everything said here.
Thank you. What I would add is that, because I was there when we passed these initial thresholds, and we knew that this first year of this new biennium would be an experimental year. So there's a placeholder figure in there because we never can predict how many cold nights, how many extreme heat nights, how many smoke nights. And so I think it would be helpful for us to know more as staff starts to figure out, what exactly does that look like for heat? How do we accommodate smoke? What happens if we have an extreme, you know, multi-week session like we did a couple years ago, where it really is a 24/7 shelter that's needed? And one of the other things that I think is helpful for us to think about is, is there a way over time to be able to pull that $1,500 a night figure down? Through improvements to the building, through, you know, whatever it is, can we take a look with our partner at what is driving that cost up? And I think it's important to remember that it includes insurance, it includes all sorts of things you can't see. But is there a way, now that we own that building and we have a long-term investment in it, is there a way for us to make some investments that might be able to bring down that per-night cost? I think those are all parts of the conversation that I'm hoping that we continue to have. But it sounds to me, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, that there is not interest in changing the thresholds, and so we will move on from there. Councilor Bloom?
Just a quick question. Is there a way that we can have a conversation, though, around the resolution itself and, again, some of those structural points that I was pointing out? Whether that's legal-looking at it, but it's, I think it's problematic that the way it's set up right now. It's just kind of a free-for-all, here's the temperature, go do something, go open it up, and people are just kind of wandering around. There's no structure, there's no rules, you have one person managing it, and so if five people want to go outside at night and party, defecate, make noise, there's nothing that person can do. They don't feel comfortable enforcing some of the rules that are in place. And so I feel that it's important for us to put this in a resolution so that we can hold the provider accountable for enforcing those rules.
I would maybe recommend stricter contract terms to structure moving forward. I think another thing we can consider now that we have a set location is RFP-ing the services that we're looking for, either for the whole year or for the season. So I think now that we have a set location, we can look to structure things a little differently than we have before as we're learning as we go. Again, this is the first year that we've done things, so I think there's opportunities to kind of, you know, after the winter season, review how things went, what we would like to see changed, you know, things that need to be addressed in that facility, and then what we're looking for moving forward. And I think, you know, heat is one thing, but smoke presents a different kind of challenge that we're going to need to be able to address, which may need infrastructure. that we're going to need to be able to address, which may need infrastructure assistance in that building for filtering and things like that. So I think we have some work to do with that facility still.
And that, it sounds like that work then would happen after we clear this winter season. So to answer Counselor Bloom's question that you'll be looking at that after action, um, looking forward, and that's where these kinds of issues could be addressed. Yeah.
Great.
Counselor Ha- uh, uh, Duquesne?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Sabrina, for that information because, um, I think it's very important to have the after-winter review. Um, and, um, so after-winter review, I don't know what, we, we're coming to the end of that now. So I would like to get that on the calendar as soon as possible. And I think it would be good to have an after-each-season review because something that was mentioned before about smoke, if it's smoky one day, it's probably going to be smoky the next day. And, and what does that look like? And because we're new into this building, into this, uh, property, it's not what we do, it's how we do it. And I believe we need to have a review after each season so that we know that we're doing it right for the next season. And also it can speak to the savings that you mentioned, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. So it, it seems to me that the timing we're looking at is through, uh, well, it's really through April because we could have those freezing temperatures. You know, I've seen it, middle of May, where we've still had freezing temperatures. So, but we'll, we'll know we're kind of coming out of that winter season a bit later in March or April. Uh, and that gives us a little bit of a window before we're likely to see severe heat and, 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 uh, smoke. So is that when we might see a conversation about this?
Yeah, we'll bring it back, uh, study session, April, early May.
Okay. That meets your needs, Counselor Duquesne?
Yes, I'll make note of it.
Any, uh, final comments about this before we close out for the evening? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.